Hafidades and Manana Sizouz and many of God's blessings to all of you here this morning. The Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources in the Guam buildup is called to order. It is now 8:07. And for the record, and in accordance with 5GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent out on November 6, 2019, Wednesday, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public notice on Tuesday, November 12, 2019, which adheres to the 48-hour notice. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website, www.guamlegislature.com. I want to say for the listening audience out there, written testimonies may be submitted by emailing speaker@guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatna, Guam. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is one bill. We have Bill Number 177-35COR, which is an Act to repeal Section 5 of Public Law Number 33186 in Article 6, Chapter 8, Title IV of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the Guam Retirement Security Plan, GRSP. I don't have anybody joining me this morning. I'm lone chairperson up here, but I do have a list of people that were here in support. Written testimonies may be read, and it can ask to be summarized, five minutes per testimony. And if you do have a testimony that's printed, please submit it to our committee. It makes it easier for the staff to work on the committee report. I will note for the record, the testimony shall be confined to the substance of this bill. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions for additional testimony, as may be desired by the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for the proceedings. Individuals who do not comply may be escorted from the public room. When you speak, we kindly ask that you please make sure that the microphone is on, which is the red light, and you speak into the microphone, and also state your name for the record. Just wanted to note that, the rules of engagement up here. And with that being said, we'll move right now to Bill Number 177-35COR. I do have a list of names and a couple that would like to testify, so if I'm not mistaken, that's Attorney Vincent Camacho here to support. Wilfred Leon Guerrero here to present and support oral testimony. Mr. Gerard Cruz. Is it Palma or Puma? Paula. I apologize. Lina Leon Guerrero and Ricky Hernandez. Ladies and gentlemen, just for the listening audience, I'm going to go ahead and read an opening statement, and then I'll go ahead and open the presentation for you folks. So, Bill 177-35COR was introduced following the transmission of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund's Resolution Number 2019-01, which can be found online in the Guam Legislature's Messages and Communications. And the Guam Retirement Security Plan became law in Public Law 33-185, which was two terms ago, and I will allow the retirement fund to explain the impetus and purpose of the Guam Retirement Security Plan, as well as the reason why the Guam Retirement, Gov. Guam Retirement Fund recommends the repeal of this law. So with that being said, I can even give it over to the Chair or to the Executive Director. Good morning, Manana Sizouz, Mr. Cruz. Or Mr. Leon Guerrero. You know what, just spin some.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Wilfred Leon Guerrero. I'm Chairman of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. And with me are trustees Jerry Cruz, trustees Lina Leon Guerrero, our Director of the Retirement Fund, Paula Blas, and we have, sitting in the back here, our attorney Vince Camacho. To my left is our Maggie Robowski, our financial consultant for investment. And we have also trustee Dr. Hernandez, who are here in support of Bill 177-35COR. And as you've mentioned, Madam Speaker, we would like to see Section 5 of Public Law 33186 repealed. I'm saying we would like, but I think we need to repeal that section. That section created a new retirement plan. It's called Guam Retirement Security Plan, and we have two problems with that. First of all, there is very little interest in the part of the employees to participate in that, and thank God, because we don't have the funding to implement that. So that's the gist of our testimony, and we're submitting the written testimony to help the committee in its deliberation. We may be ready to answer any questions that you may have in regard to this bill. Thank you.
Sizouz, Maasi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our Chairman kind of summarized our basic--
If you can just say, I apologize--
Sure.
Say your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Jerry Cruz, here as a member of the Board of Trustees for the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. And in support of the repeal, our Chairman talked about a cost issue. A bigger issue is just the design problem that we'd be happy to go through with you if you'd like. When we first came to the legislature several years ago in an attempt to try and fix what we saw as a problem with the retirement fund and the gap that the old DC plan created, we proposed what we called a hybrid plan. Evolved to what has been passed as a DB175 plan. The cash balance plan or the GRSP scheme, which is what we're talking about today, was something that was not thoroughly vetted through numbers by us, and so we weren't able to go through all the details in making those fixes. But what has resulted is a plan by way of the GRSP that has some serious design problems that I think if implemented would create a larger liability, not just from a financials perspective that our Chairman was describing in that we don't have the funding source to implement this, but also as a fiduciary, from the standpoint of a fiduciary, in looking out for the members of the retirement fund. The biggest, I think, problem with the GRSP in its design and the way it was designed is that it provides for a static crediting rate. So it works like this. The employee contributes a certain amount, I think 6.2%, and the Government of Guam matches it by that same amount. And then those funds earn a rate of 4%. That 4% every year for the life of the member. And then at the end of their term, whatever they've managed to accumulate, plus the 4% is annuitized for the rest of their life. The problem with that scheme, first of all, is the 4% is arbitrary. It doesn't take into account time value of money, which, if you think about it, is nothing more than a glorified savings account. The 4% earnings rate doesn't consider the possibility that inflation could be as high as 8% or 9%. And so if inflation does go beyond 4%, the earnings that that member receives is going to fall behind what the actual cost of living is, and there's no way to predict that in the future. It's just a static rate. The bigger problem then becomes that in order to create an annuity, a discount rate has got to be developed. In other words, in order to annuitize a certain lump sum for the balance of a member's life upon retirement, some discount rate needs to be used to calculate an annual annuity. That discount rate typically is published by the IRS on an annual basis. And so there, if an employee is starting employment on day one, or, well, on day one, it is, at best, arbitrary to make an estimate of what that member is going to receive by way of retirement 30 years from now, because the rate has not even been published. So you run the risk year after year of not knowing what a member is going to be able to retire at, notwithstanding the amount of money that they're storing away and earning over the course of their career. That scheme is quite different from the DB plan, where from day one, a member is fully cognizant or fully aware of the amount, the rate that they're going to earn upon their 30-year period. They know that if they're in the old plan, they're going to earn 2.25% of their three highest salaries. In the way of the DB175 plan, they know they're going to earn 1.75% of their three highest salaries. And even on the DC plan, they're clear that if there is any upside potential beyond the 4%, that the member's going to benefit from that. In other words, if they invest properly and the market is returning 10%, then the member's going to get that 10%. The GRSP doesn't contemplate that. It states simply that they're going to earn 4% irrespective of whether or not the market does better than 4%. And so that's a dangerous precedent from a funding perspective, but it's an even more dangerous notion from a fiduciary perspective, because we know as fiduciaries that we are putting our members at risk of not being able to successfully retire upon the completion of their employment in 30 years. So for those two reasons, I think that the retirement fund simply thinks that this plan, the bigger, and probably the final, risk is that, as currently written, the GRSP is mandated to be the default plan for retirees, or for government employees. So making it mandatory removes discretion and puts, I think, the Board of Trustees at risk of knowing that this is not a viable plan, putting our members at risk of failure for retirement. And for those reasons, I think that it ought to be repealed and re-looked at if that's the case, and reintroduced at some point in the future. That's it.
Thank you. Before we go on further, I'd like to welcome our Legislative Secretary, Secretary Senator Amanda Shelton. Thank you for joining us this morning. Anyone else wishing to speak before I yield any questions? Executive Director or trustee Leon Guerrero?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. My name is Lina Leon Guerrero for the record, and I am a trustee with the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. I just would like to add to what the Chair and our Treasurer has said with regards to what the Board of Trustees has considered. So for over a decade, we have worked with leaders in the legislature and the administration and even the judiciary in trying to address the gap, as Jerry referred to it, that we saw in the DC plan, and trying to ensure retirement security for our members. So we're always looking at the best interest of our members, as well as the trust fund that is created to ensure that they have retirement security when they retire. And as we sit before you today, we're supportive of repealing GRSP, because the way it was enacted and designed, it does not do that. It puts the trust fund at risk, because it does not adequately address what happens when the market fluctuates, and yet it guarantees a payout to the member. In addition, the payout to the members may be, in fact, very inferior to what the DB1.75, what the DC plan. When we ran the numbers as we went through the retirement reform exercise, it was clear that the GRSP plan didn't necessarily yield a positive result for our members as the DB1.75 or the DC-enhanced plan as it stands now. So those are things that we look at when we consider it, and when it came time to implement it, it was clear for us as the Board of Trustees, as fiduciaries, in looking out for the trust fund and our members, that we could not implement the plan as it was written. So as we look at the options that are available to our members, both the DB1.75 and the DC plan, there really is, doesn't seem to be a place for GRSP at this point in time, and for that reason, we recommend that it be repealed.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. My name is Maggie Robowski. I am the investment consultant to the DB plan, the GGRF DB plan. I agree, I think trustee Cruz has highlighted the major design flaws of this plan. I wanted to add one more, one more point to that. So the two points trustee Cruz mentioned is the fact that the 4% crediting rate does not use a market benchmark. So if you think of how returns in the long run can be referenced, usually it is referenced to the inflation rate. So when inflation rate is high, everything returns highly in terms of in the financial markets, because investors have to be compensated by inflation. And when inflation is very low, everything, expected return goes lower. 4%, is it good or not good? It really, it really is very arbitrary, because we don't know what future holds for inflation. So that's number one issue. The second, the second major issue is the discount rate, as trustee Cruz mentioned. The discount rate published by IRS is actually referenced to the interest rate at the time the member retires. And that is unknown until the person retires. I want to add a third point, that it is unfair for the members who are in this, who may elect to be in this plan, because their annuity payment at retirement is determined by the day they retire, the interest rate on the day they retire. Once, there's no career average. So if, let's say this person retired on a day, interest rate is 10%. They're going to get a very low annuity, because the discount rate is very high. And another person, let's say, retired on a different day, the interest rate is low, let's say it's 5%, that other person is going to get a very high annuity payment. Even though both of these people have perhaps worked the same amount of time and accumulated the same amount of ending balance, they will get a very different annuity payment, because their annuity payment is determined on the day for the rest of their life. And that is just a very flawed design for the member. It is also flawed design for the retirement fund, because the retirement fund unfunded can be, you know, can incur unfunded liability, and we will not know until the day the person retires. So that's the additional point I'd like to add.
Thank you. I may have a question, and I'm hoping, but I understand the Legislative Secretary may have an inquiry regarding the participants. So Secretary Shelton, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you all for being here this morning. I'm just reading the findings and intent of this bill, which says that the defined contribution retirement system, the participants, they had until January 1, 2018, and only six participants so elected to participate in the GRSP. So what will happen to these six participants if this bill were to go into effect?
Thank you, Senator. The six participants that did elect for--
Sorry, Executive Director.
I'm sorry. My name is Paula Blas, the Executive Director for the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. The six individuals from the DC plan that did elect to transfer to the GRSP, because the board had decided to go ahead and place a pause on the implementation of GRSP until it was resolved, they were given an opportunity to either stay in DC or move to the DB175.
And that would be the hybrid one, right?
Yeah. DB175 is also known as the hybrid.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to, aging here. Any other questions for that? So on page three, Section 2, 3, you asked that the effective date going back to the implementation be implemented to take care of those participants that are already in. Am I saying that correctly? On Section 3, page 3?
Section 3 is basically to make the repeal effective as of the effective date of the GRSP plan, because there's currently no one in that plan right now.
If somebody asks to implement this based on the participants that are in there, because there was a moratorium, right, to figure out the kinks with the six participants, if we had to implement today, if we were forced to implement it today, what are we looking at in as far as the financial impact? Are we looking in the hundreds of thousands?
I think the financial impact, we can come to a calculation on that. For six people, because it's so small, the dollar amount may be immaterial. Okay, the dollar amount may be immaterial, but what may be more important is that the-- well, setting it up is going to be a problem, for sure.
So maybe is there a cost to implement the program then? Would there be a major cost to implement the program then?
Yeah, and the reason why I'm kind of hesitant, because we won't know the cost until we go down that road. What our consultant tried to explain was that there could be an unfunded cost based on what the market does versus the crediting rate. And we don't know that. We won't know that until we get to the end of their career, because we won't know the mortality rate, how much they've managed to accumulate, what the discount rate they're going to, they're going to retire at. All these numbers that are necessary in order to create an annuity, to calculate an annuity, are unknown until the time that a member is going to retire. So all the funding costs are unknown until we get to the point when they're about to retire. The advantage of having a large pool of individuals in a plan, any plan really, is the scale, right? You have the economies of scale, so that because you're working now with a larger pool of funds, and you have a longer time horizon, you're able to average out bad months, bad years, and good years, and so that the costs are spread over a wider pool of individuals. With just six people, those advantages of scale are not available. So it becomes, I mean, it becomes really more like a retail retirement plan for six people, no different, really, than walking into any one of, you know, a Charles Schwab and asking them to develop a 401K just for you. So we could develop a plan and probably a cost, but it would be inefficient to the extent that we won't know the true cost until that individual is going to retire.
Trustee Leon Guerrero shared just a minute ago about the opportunity of speaking to the six applicants, I mean, the six applicants that joined. Were they approached in as far as asking them to switch over or given the opportunity to go into additional plans that retirement has to offer? Like the savings plan, like the others, like, maybe I'm saying this wrong, the 357?
Yeah, the only, the only plans that were available to them were the DC plan--
The DC, right.
Yeah, the 401 and the DB175. So, and, and yes, each one individually was approached. As a matter of fact, every single participant in the DC plan, for those that wanted comparisons of what their benefit would look like under the DB175, DC, or the GRSP, we provided that to them as well.
And they were all satisfied?
Yeah. I think a lot of it, too, initially, when they signed up for the GRSP, was not really understanding what those benefits were going to be.
I wanted to make sure that we got that on record, so that we have an understanding that based on the program that has been passed into law, but based on the economies of scale, based on the presentation, and based on who literally applied since its inception, that that opportunity was provided to them, so that this literally could become moot, but we'd have to take it off the books. So that's why we're moving forward with the support of that and the recommendation from consultant and all that. I wanted to make sure that that was on the record. So Legislative Secretary, any other questions? If not, I literally want, yes, Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Before we end the hearing, I'd just like to announce that, sitting next to me, Maggie Robowski has been nominated to be recognized as the best investment consultant in the country.
Wow. Congratulations.
I'm going to be sitting to celebrity here.
Ever blessed, thank you. Oh, congratulations, and I just want to say thank you for looking out for the retirement board, as we have thousands of recipients who retired from Gov. Guam, still a part of this, and very important to them as it relates to their livelihood. And so I want to say thank you, Directors, to the Executive Director, thank you to counsel here, Mr. Dr. Hernandez back there, thank you for being here also. It does make a big difference when you see the support of the board, the retirement office here, but more importantly, to know that this is very critical and this could have an impediment, I mean, maybe not impediment, but making sure that in the future, this may not be right for retirement. So we can go ahead and move over that. If anybody else wishes to present written testimony, like I said earlier, you can do that by sending it to speaker@guamlegislature.org or 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatna, Guam, 96930, or you literally can submit, walk into our office here and drop off a copy. And if there are no other folks wishing to present from the audience, I will call-- this hearing on Bill Number 177-35 publicly heard, and we hope to get this bill in the next session agenda. And if we don't have one, we're in session right now, this won't make it there. If we don't have a December session, we'll look at having it for the January session. So we just want to say thank you for being here and taking the time. And again, you can also email me again at speaker@gwamlegislature.org. So we will adjourn this meeting at 8:39 a.m. Sisus Massey, and thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.